All right, 9 o'clock. Let's stand, please, for a prayer and pledge of allegiance.
To heaven and the Father, we thank you today that we could come together, Lord, and I pray you'll guide this meeting as we do the county's business, Lord, it will do in the best interest that we possibly can, Lord, and I pray you just protect our county today and be with all our first responders, Lord, and protect our county and our workers today, Lord, and we thank you for all your blessings, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for the record, today is June the 13th, 2022, 9:00 a.m. We're meeting for our first regular meeting of the month, a bit late this month. Been three weeks since our last typical meeting of the Commissioner's Court. We've had some business in between there, but nonetheless, item number one is opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to address the court on any item that is not on the agenda? Then we will move to consider a couple of sets of minutes. Item number two was our May 23rd, our last regular Monday meeting. We have a set of minutes for approval for that meeting. Make that motion. Motion to approve the set of minutes made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parchman. Any discussion, comments? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
And then, right after that meeting, the very next day, in fact, we met in here with our consultant that will guide us through the grant management process on our American Rescue Plan funds, Mr. Mark Taylor, and we took care of that on the 24th of May, and so there is a short set of minutes for that meeting as well. Make that motion. Motion made by Fitch, I heard first, and Commissioner Parker will second that. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Item number four is our report from Commissioners regarding what road work is going on. I'll start with Precinct One, Lister.
We've been doing a lot of scavenging on County Road 1670, been doing lots of patching, cut a few dead trees down on Randy Robinson, Rola Robinson, small engine repair, a few devils there, it was causing a nuisance, and digging soft spots, and we actually finished chip seal at County Road 1455. Thanks for helping out with the precinct, we appreciate it. So we got all that done and ready to go with the next one, so it's looking good.
Was that our first chip seal project of the year? Good. All right, thank you.
Precinct Two, we've been side cutting 1070, we're gonna try to mow it first this week. We got a few more soft spots we're gonna cut out, and we're doing the ditch work on it so we can get that, some few paving spots on it and have it ready to chip seal, four and a half miles by the end of this month. We worked on 1155, on 1155, we put in three cross culverts and cleaned the ditches and we paved some of that road, got it in good shape. We had some trees down the last few weeks on 1165 and 2730, and we had one big tree down in Hope's Landing, and a culvert we had to clean out, and that ought to get it.
Thank you. Commissioner, Precinct Three.
We're trying to finish up on County Road 3365. We put a 48-inch by 30-foot culvert in, and we put some other small 12-inch culverts in, about the four of them all together, and we're about to wrap that road up, get it ready to seal and chip seal. And we had a few trees that had dead trees blow down, we picked them up on 3070, and about it, about it.
We've been trying to get some dead trees down, it's been falling, a lot of stuff falling off of them and all, and we spent part of the week, last week, trying to get them down and been side cutting north of Cookeville, over there, north of 67, and trying to get that done. We started this morning doing our first round of mowing right of ways, and I've got some oil sands supposed to be start tomorrow, coming in to start doing some scavenging. Soon as we get through with our mowing, it'll take us probably five to seven days to get all the way around the precinct with that. Soon as we get through with that, we're gonna start scavenging some roads and some places that we fixed in the roads and all that we hadn't covered yet, so hopefully get that started here in the next week or so.
All right, thank you. Item number five, consider and possibly approve a phone service with turnkey connections for our jail, and it sounds like this is a, I don't know about a big change, but a significant change in phone service. Sheriff, if you'd kind of explain to us what phone service this is, how it works, who your current provider is, and why you're considering turnkey corrections.
Okay, I have with me David Price, my jail captain, today to help out with this. Yeah, we're with Securus Phone Company right now, and what that is, is the phone company that has all the phones in the cell so that the inmates can just call their family members, and of course, you know, we all get a commission, the county gets commission on all the calls they make. Probably, I guess it's been around eight years ago, we asked Turnkey, because there's just so many more options and things that they could do for us that they weren't doing. One thing is like the kiosk. Now, what a kiosk is, is that device that goes in there, you can do video visitations, you can send emails to it, and they said, yeah, we can do it, but it's gonna be like $50,000 to put it in. And so we found this company with Turnkey, and they're based out of Oklahoma, and they come--
But back up a second, you just said turnkey, did you mean Securus?
Yeah, yeah, Securus said they would do it, but it would cost about 50 grand or so to get it put in. So we contacted this other, the phone company that we're actually shared with now, this Turnkey. Turnkey said, yeah, we'll come in, we'll put your kiosks in, and we will work out a payment deal with you, we'll just take some of the commission for six months, after that it's paid for, then you guys get the, what is it, 30% David?
It's 30% right now, yes.
Oh, and so, man, that's really been good for us, because we got these in here and didn't cost us anything. I mean, this company has really been good to work with, and they've been wanting our business for a while and on the phone service, so I think it's time that we move over. They've proven themselves, and what they're gonna do, not only because like, well, who we're with now, the Securus is actually wanting to cut our commissions, they're wanting to take more and give us less, and they're not offering anything else. Turnkey's coming in saying, hey, not only will we up your commission, but we've got a lot to offer, so I'm gonna let David explain to you what they've got to offer now, what we have.
Did you say you're currently doing some business with Turnkey?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they've got--
So you've got a phone service provider, and you've got an email and video visitation service with Turnkey?
Yeah, and when we went to Turnkey, that saved the county about 10,000 a year automatically because they put the law library for free that we have to have by law in there, we have to give the inmates access to the law library. Before, it was costing us like, and I think it was going through John Mark, it was costing us like 10 grand a year. So when Turnkey come in, we got to cut that out, and they provide it for free. So that's another service that they do for us, they've really shown--
You think about going exclusively with Turnkey for all of those communications?
Everything, yeah, just, yeah, Turnkey's really been good for us, so I'll let David explain what we've got.
So I'd like to answer all your questions before you even have them. So, we, Turnkey's not new to us, we've had them for, I think, about eight years now. They offer the video visitation, email messaging, SMS messaging, as well as in-house communication as far as if the inmate needs something, they send a message through that system to our jailers, and our jailers answer it, and then they're able to respond in kind. Also, if there's any grievances or anything of that type of issue, those come through the system as well. The inmate handbook, all those things are currently being taken care of with Turnkey. We also get our commissary products from Turnkey, and then we take care of commissary in-house. So we use their products and then we sell them. As far as commissions are concerned, we make 30% on all of those communications that we currently use with Turnkey. If this goes through, then we'll go up to 35%, so it's gonna give us another 5% increase on all those communications that we're already using. The phone service, they are going to offer better investigative tools for our investigators, which is a big deal to us. So, Securus had this opportunity years ago, back before we ever went to Turnkey to begin with, we went to them and we asked them if they would be able to put in handheld devices and kiosks on the walls, and that's, like Sheriff said, they wanted to charge us about $50,000 to do that. There wasn't any talk of future plans or anything of that nature. However, we were able to get Turnkey back at that time. When we did that, obviously Turnkey was looking to go farther into working with us and eventually get the phone system. Well, it worked out for them because, or I think anyhow, because what we're gonna be able to do now is also we're gonna be able to get those handheld devices that we talked about years ago as well. So the inmates will have handheld devices inside their cells to which they can make their phone calls, it'll still get charged to them same as it has been, they'll be able to make phone calls while they're sitting on their bunk, talking to their loved ones versus having to go up to the wall and use the one phone and having to share that one phone. So you can see how that's also gonna increase the revenue that's gonna be coming in. Obviously, they're gonna spend more money when you can sit on your bunk versus having to walk over and talk on the phone in front of everybody. They also, they'll have a few other things, all those things that we can do from the kiosk, they'll be able to do from those handheld devices as well. So the increase in revenue is gonna be tremendous on that. And where Securus also messed up for us this past year was, they had some FCC stuff changed to where they were going to take a cut, and they were gonna take a loss, rather than them take a loss, they pushed it off on different counties and had the counties start to take that loss. And we saw it, at one point in time, we weren't getting, I think it was like $2 and something a month, where we should have been getting well over that, like hundreds of dollars a month, if not thousands. We're gonna get all of that back with Turnkey, because we have transparency that we've never had with Securus. In order to get information from Securus, you have to send in a request for the report, and then eventually you will get it back, and when you're trying to read it, it's like trying to figure out something, speaking another language, I don't know. The transparency was a big deal, we looked at four other companies when doing this, and there were about three of them, they're very transparent. You can now look and see exactly how much you have coming in every month and where it's coming from, what line it's coming from. So that was a big deal to me, that was actually one of the things that sold me on it, was being able to see exactly where the money's coming from here.
How does, how do the prisoners pay for those services?
So, what we call their books, right? So a family member will put money onto their books, they're able to do that from their computer at the house, or they can come up and they can put the money on via a kiosk that we have in the lobby for them. They can now do all those things from their phone or their computer, their family puts some money on there, and then they're able to spend it on whether it be phone calls or food, things of that nature.
Prisoners can't trade those dollars amongst themselves?
No, that's actually against the rules inside the jail. Obviously, any rules that can be made can also be broken, they attempt to get around on things and make trades and things of that nature, but no, the money, once it's put on that inmate's account, it cannot be moved around to another inmate's account. What they'll do is they'll trade a soup, or they'll trade an e-sig or something like that.
What is a call, typical, I'm just curious, what does a call cost them, a video conference, an email?
Yeah, so right now, and that's another thing with Securus, they range anywhere from 21 cents on up to 25 cents, I believe it is. With Turnkey, Turnkey is going to charge 10 cents per minute, that's per minute, I'm sorry, Turnkey will charge 10 cents per minute, and we will make the rest, as long as we're within the FCC guidelines, which we're safely within FCC guidelines at 21 cents, which is what I think we've decided on here, then we're gonna make 11 cents where they make 10 cents. So every minute of phone call, and then obviously with those minutes going up, since we will be able to get these handheld devices, then we'll see a big change.
So essentially, you're like handing them a phone through the bars, and they can--
They actually will be inside the cell with them, they'll have charging stations inside, so they'll have the handheld device. It does not have access to the outside world, the only phone calls they'll be able to make are all monitored, they're all recorded, so our investigators can pick up on that at any point in time. The technology, the way it is now, you can actually type in a word that you're looking for in any of their communications, and it will pop for you on the screen. If you're looking at an inmate that's trying to sell guns, you type in the word gun, it will pull up all communications that have the word gun inside of it. That's another big thing for our investigators.
What happens if they get mad and smash that phone on their bunk?
We're not gonna let them have another one, we'll put them on restriction, we'll put them in the separation cell, we'll keep them on restriction, but the phone itself, or the handheld device rather itself, will be taken care of by Turnkey, we won't have to pay for that.
Okay, thank you.
So hopefully I answered anything y'all might have had questions about.
When will this go into effect?
July 17th, I believe, is when it will actually go into effect. We have everything we need for me to send it over, as soon as I send it over, we'll start making plans to make that happen. We'll continue to work with Securus until we can safely and effectively transition, and Securus will work with us, I've already made a phone call to them, so if we have to go over by a couple of days, they're not gonna make a big deal about it, and we shouldn't go without service whatsoever.
And it doesn't cost us upfront fee?
No, nothing is upfront, as a matter of fact, we're also getting a bunch of additions added on, we're gonna have mail scan service gonna be provided to us through Turnkey at no charge, where we're able to scan the mail in, it will go to those kiosks and handheld devices versus us having to hand them the mail, which was how they were getting a bunch of drugs in. They'll soak the paper and drugs, and K-2 is a big deal, they'll get K-2 in jail sometimes. We will no longer be giving them paper mail, they'll have their mail scanned in, so that's another way that Turnkey's able to help us out.
Y'all are mean.
They'll still have their mail, but they'll get it when they get out, the paper mail they'll have whenever they get out of jail, they'll have their digital mail.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
I make a motion we approve Turnkey's meeting.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parchman to approve going with Turnkey Corrections Phone Service, starting in July, seconded by Commissioner Fitch. Any more questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, y'all.
Have a great day.
Thank y'all.
Gary didn't slip in, did he? No. All right, I imagine Gary Louba will be here, he usually comes about 9:30, because that's what he's gotten used to, when I've had him come to meetings. So we will move on to, we'll jump over, and we'll consider and possibly approve the Osborne Lane subdivision in Precinct Three, this is item number seven, I think I saw a slip in, Cassie? Cassie, who are you with there, is this your partner?
Yes.
Okay, what's your name?
Kendrick Ward.
Kendrick, all right, nice to have you. We may have some questions for you, so Cassie, in fact, why don't you come up here just in case we do have a question, and I've got our Sergeant Bain here is with us to answer any questions as well, and let me read you what I have. This is in Precinct Three, and as he always does, Sergeant Bain has put together a nice narrative here, so let me give you some background. Over the past few weeks, I've been assisting or guiding Cassie Osborne, who's here, through the proper procedures for a subdivision development. What had occurred is that in 2020, Cassie purchased 2.025 acres in the 400 block of County Road 3070. More recently, Cassie and her partner constructed two site-built homes on the property with the intent to divide the property into two lots. This development was not discovered until the need permitting onsite sewage facility for the two homes resulting in my involvement. Once I became involved, I informed Cassie of the need to subdivide the property and submit an overall site plan for onsite sewage. Since then, it has been found that the 2.025 acres was created when it was separated from approximately a 10.25 acre track, possibly following a divorce of previous owners back in the early to mid 2000s. It was surveyed and calculated by measurements to the original pins in the center of the road, and they were not allowing for a deduction for the road frontage easement. In short, so what they thought was gonna be two acres ended up being actual less than two acres because they were counting some of that portion that was in the road frontage easement, which you can't do. In short, what we're looking at is a subdivision of two lots, with Lot Number One having a total area of .945 acres and a usable area of .808. Lot Number Two will have a total area of 1.060 with usable area of one acre. A variance request was submitted with the overall site plan for onsite sewage that was completed by George Sanford in regards to the county's minimum lot requirement of one acre. I normally am not in favor of allowing a variance in the development process, however, in this case, I feel an exception should be made. Lot Number One has a total area just slightly less than one acre and a usable area well over the state's minimum size of .5. So as you'll recall, TCEQ requires a minimum, we decided to go with a one-acre minimum, that gives us a lot of room for adjustments if and when we feel the need. Sometimes we have felt it to be not a problem, other times we have not allowed it. So I've given you copies of these narratives, I have the George Sanford plan here, you've also got a copy of that in front of you, you've got what the plat now looks like, and so as I understand it, the two houses are completed, right?
Yes.
Or almost completed? In other words, we know where the houses sit, they appear to be marked on here, and so everything about this would have been perfectly fine, we're just a little shy of the one acre, is that right Sergeant? So these are relatively small houses, we're not putting multifamily buildings on here, we're not putting large homes, these appear to be about 1500 or 1600 square feet. So George Sanford has put together a very reasonable site plan, and it will work, you've got usable acreage that is .808 and one acre. So what we're asking for is, first of all, for you to see if you are comfortable with giving a variance down from one acre to just over .8 acres, and if in general you're okay with this subdivision. Any questions here? You've got all the necessary players.
I make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve comes from Dana Applewhite, it's in his precinct.
Second.
Second Commissioner Fitch. Anyone have any other questions or discussion? Cassie, do you have any questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, all in favor of approval of the, what do we call it?
Osborne.
Osborne, Osborne Lane, where'd you come up with that name?
All in favor?
All, I'm kidding you, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And now, next time you're developing land, and as you talk to other people doing this, tell them to start with that guy right there, and he will, he will hold your hand, and I'm not scolding you, this is not the first time this has happened, and it probably won't be the last time, we're trying to get the word out there that we've got a very reasonable procedure to go through, and if everybody will abide by that, we'll make these things flow as smoothly as we can, okay? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And I'll get these signed, and we'll get these filed after our meeting, okay? You're welcome to stay, you're welcome to go. Item number eight, consider and possibly approve extension of bids for the following vendors. In years past, you will recall that we used to rebid nearly everything that we purchased in bulk every year, and with Barbara's guidance, she came up with a way that we could minimize the time requirements of going through this bid process, if you had two willing parties that were willing to extend the previous year's bid into the next year. And in this time of rising prices here, this is, you understand why we don't have as many of our vendors willing to extend those bids. And so we do have these four companies here, A, B, C, and D, they are Jackson Oil, H-E Span, P2 Emulsions, and Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions for you to consider. Barbara has been digging into the details of these, Barbara, what would you like to tell us about these four vendors and the opportunity we have to extend these bids?
If you'll recall, our original bid allowed us one year with two years' extension, so we extended some things last year, so this is the beginning of the next, the last year, the second year of extension. The reason why we're not extending them longer than that is, number one, the vendors are not interested in doing that. We requested that they go ahead and allow us to do 60 days because we're currently working on the requirements for the American Rescue Plan purchasing to allow us to purchase road materials with some of those funds. So we contacted all the vendors on the list, some did not respond at all, some told us no and no uncertain terms, and then there were a few that would allow us to extend for 60 days. And it's not everything that's on the list, Jackson Oil will, I'm sorry, 60 days, is that what I said, 60 days? Jackson Oil has agreed to do that, H-E Span has agreed to do that for seal coat aggregate, flex-based limestone, one and three-quarter inch stone, one and a half inch, flex-based sandstone, and then emulsified asphalt has been approved for extension of 60 days with P2 emulsions, provided we purchase through the Tarrant County Co-op. The good news is, we're already a member of the Tarrant County Co-op. I had sent y'all some information about a week and a half ago to remind you that these bids on these items will end June 30th, and so I cautioned you to buy what you need to before it went up at the end of June. This will give you 60 more days, I hope it gets us through the critical portion of summer, and I also hope, I'm working closely with Mark Taylor, with Taylor and Associates, to get the bids together to move forward with that American Rescue Plan. Now, the thing that's different about Ergon, Ergon has requested, they will only do this with a price increase. The other ones that I mentioned to you, Jackson Oil, H-E Span, and P2, there's no price increase. On Ergon, they are requesting a price increase, and their price will be based on, again, the Tarrant County Co-op, which we are a member, and the thing about the Tarrant County Co-op is they give you a flat fee, and then you have to negotiate the delivery cost. Everyone, every person who purchases from them contacts them and says, what's it cost for you to deliver that to us today? So what I've compared is what their current rate is, what their proposed new rate, and what it is on the Tarrant County Co-op. The Tarrant County Co-op rate is a little less than what they originally proposed, but because we're a member of Tarrant County Co-op, we can purchase through that at any time. So that's why I'm bringing those to you today, and I'll have this information for y'all. Basically allows us to extend purchases with Jackson Oil, H-E Span, and P2 Emulsions at the current rate, and Ergon at the Tarrant County rate.
How much is that?
Uh, let me see, I got it right here. For one, H-E's 225 plus whatever the delivery is.
It was what it was, it was $2.
$2.
It was $2.
And that's 225?
225.
Okay, there was so many prices.
What they quoted us was 260.
Yeah, okay.
So it was significantly less than what they had quoted us when we asked to extend.
That's good, 225, that's--
Plus delivery, I don't know what the delivery's gonna be, that could change.
Right, delivery, but we picked up a bunch last week.
Do not.
We picked up a lot, we used our trucks and picked it up there last week, but I know the delivery fee and the cost of a tanker's gonna be, add more to it though.
Yeah.
Well, if there's a price increase, how is this an extension? I guess that's what I was kinda confused.
We're a member of the Tarrant County Co-op, which is an interlocal purchasing service, and we can purchase through those bids at any time, so we're not necessarily extending their bid, we're just gonna go with the Tarrant County Co-op bid.
Okay, well, I know you-- Well, I know you stated that three different ways. I'm still having a hard time processing that, but I think I understand that now.
Judgingly, those cooperatives have gone out and done all the legwork.
Yeah, that's great for us.
But the thing is, it's great for us, but in small counties or in counties that are removed from, you know, the location where that is available, is there's not always vendors on there that we can use. Because, you know, we do try to purchase from local vendors where we can.
Yeah.
But we're just, we're very blessed that, you know, they're on there. And P2's on there as well. We can use P2 for as long as we want to, as long as they're on the Tarrant County Co-op. In fact, both of these.
So all of these are just 60 days?
60 days. Well, now let's back up. If they're on the Tarrant County Co-op, we can purchase from, through those bids for as long as the Co-op bid is good.
But it may not be the same bid that we have got with, with them.
Right.
But just like, just like she was saying, Ergon there has been, our bid with them was $2. What Tarrant County's is 225.
So it's still a little higher than what we had, but it's less, they, they did not want to extend. But when we found that they, without increasing the price significantly, but when we found they were on the Co-op, they had to follow those Co-op bids.
And when Jeff tried to get his last week, they first told him it was $290. And I told him, I said, we're under, under contract with that. And I said, you need to check with Barbara and them, make sure that, that, you know, they know.
Good for us, yeah.
It's, we are expecting a significant increase unless we can continue to, to buy through Tarrant County like this.
Good. Well, in case of Jackson Oil, doesn't, Jackson's price fluctuates with, I mean, they have kind of a built-in fluctuation in there.
It's like nine cents over market or something.
And so why would they not want to extend for more than that? Because maybe they're going to want to raise their delivery fees and such because gas is so much more?
We currently have bids out for the air, HVAC and fuel.
Yeah.
We'll have those to you next meeting. So there's no need for us to extend those more than 60 days.
Okay. No, I'm, no, I was just talking about like Jackson Oil.
Yes.
Why, why were they not willing to extend beyond 60 days since their price fluctuates anyway with the market? And I guess the reason is why they may want to add on, they may want to have a larger add-on because of their personal costs have gone up.
That could very well be.
Okay. Okay, so it's just these four. Can we approve these all together or do you want us to approve them one at a time?
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. Let's take the easy route. Any other questions for Barbara on any of these?
I might vote we approve.
Motion to approve the extension of bids for Jackson Oil, HE Span, P2 Emulsions, Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions are actually the product that we buy from them. We'll extend bids for 60 days with those four entities. That motion is made by Commissioner Parshman.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Applewhite.
One more thing, Judgingly. The current bid's in June 30th, so this bid is to August 30th.
Good.
It's not, it's not 60 days from today.
It's through the end of the month.
Through the end of August, yes.
All right. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thanks Barbara for doing all that work. Gary, are you ready? I'll jump back to you if you are.
Yes, sir.
All right. Gary Luba is here with us today and we have a few more deals to wrap up where they have been helping us purchase right-of-way. So back on item number six, consider and possibly approve payments to our right-of-way property owners related to our FM 1735 project. Gary is here to tell you who he has finalized with and ask us to cut checks to those. So Gary, it's all yours.
Good morning, everybody. We just have, these are two temporary easements and parcel 30 TE and 31 TE. And 30 TE is, is really low, is, we agreed upon the appraised value of $204 and that's for Joe Lewis. And then the next one is much higher, parcel 30, 31 TE. That is for Larry Bullard and wife Tina Bullard. And that's for a total with closing costs, we're going through the title company with this one. The first one, we're not, the 204, that's, you know, it's not very much risk, so we're, we're just not going to go through the title company on that one. This 31 TE is $7,136.71. And that includes, most of that is for like cost to cure affecting a pond there, this Larry and Tina's pond. So they, they get some cost to cure on that and that's, that's why.
You've called these both temporary easements.
Yes, sir.
To differentiate that between what most of our purchases are.
Right. So these are for work to be done. I can't remember the county road number. It's the first county road to the right as you're going south on 1735 past the storage buildings.
Yeah. There's a neighborhood down there.
Yes. And they're doing work there just to fix the, the entrance of the county road as it ties in to 1735, making it better on-site, you know, and everything going in and out. So, and it's for three years, so we pay them, you know, kind of like a rental for three years. And then after the work is done, then it, it goes away.
Why is one of those so much smaller and the other one's fairly substantial? What's the basic?
Because the, there's that pond on the, I think it's on the south side of the, of the county road as it comes into 1735 and it's in the boundaries of the TE are getting into that pond.
Okay.
So it was cost to cure, you know, in case he wants to, you know, fill part of that in or whatever, he's got the money to do that.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's basically it. Do you need a report on any of the other outstanding parcels? We've got.
No, are those the only two we're writing checks for today?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and that's, we got parcel one and seven. We're still trying to work with the lenders to obtain parcel releases of lien. And then parcels two, eight, and 12, those are the eminent domain parcels. And I checked on those. They're supposedly, I thought they would have done it a month ago, but they're supposedly filing the condemnation petitions or had this past week.
So that is, that is going on with those folks I met on the phone with?
Yeah. And I, I would estimate, you know, hearings probably sometime next month. And then probably won't take very long to get the awards, the award checks to deposit in the registry of the court. So once we do that, then Tex- dot has possession of those parcels.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's basically.
Who handles the selection of that special commission that does those hearings?
That'd be your county court at law judge.
Which we don't have.
Oh, you don't have that? So with the district court.
Okay.
Yeah. So normally an ED either goes, most time a county court at law or district, which, whichever jurisdiction that is. So they, they choose those people and they would be, I don't know who is on their role, but they usually, you know, what I've seen is they have about six people that they might choose from and they are like landowners themselves in the county. They could be a realtor or an attorney or, you know, or just an average person, you know, that, that owns property in the county.
Yeah. And we went through that 12 years ago. None of us were involved in that process. Who will make that call to that district judge and initiate and get that process started?
That will be the, your outside counsel. He'll be working with the, with the court to get those things going. And they'll let him know when they've, they've appointed commissioners. And then once they do that, then the attorney will start coordinating a hearing date with everyone. And that includes those three commissioners, your landowners, appraiser, probably Tex- dot engineer, just to say, you know, explain the project, you know, the, the overview of it. And then like court reporter, you know, because it always goes on record.
All right. So for day, you need a check for $204 and one for $7,000. How much?
$136.71.
All right. Any questions for Gary?
Gary, what's the two parcel numbers on that condemned?
On these?
On the condemned, the ones?
Oh, on the condemned, parcel two, eight, and 12. Eight and 12 have the same owners?
Two different owners, three cases.
Yeah. Yeah. So, and basically again, the reason why is just the title is so bad, judgment liens and tax liens and just thousands of dollars.
It's not a matter of they don't agree with the price we're offering. It's even if they did agree, there's somebody else that's really controlling the decision.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Other than that, that's, it's winding, you know, winding up, so.
Can we write Gary a check? If so, I need somebody to make that motion.
Make a motion, we approve the payments.
Motion is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second Commissioner Parshman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Gary, if you want to.
Thank you.
Hang around, I guess. Item number nine, consider and possibly approve a seatbelt policy for the county. I had to chuckle at that. Barbara, will you tell us about what, there is more reason than meets the eye here, so.
There is more reason. Yes, sir. One of the requirements of the American Rescue Plans, the ARPA funds, is that we have a federal, we have a purchasing policy that meets the federal requirements. I sent that to y'all along with a copy of my, I think there were 16 or 17 questions of things that I didn't understand. And I've been over those with Mr. Taylor, Mark Taylor from Taylor and Associates. One of the requirements that's in there is a seatbelt policy. We don't have a formal seatbelt policy, but we are required to have that in place before we can begin the process of bidding for anything through the ARPA funds. So he sent me this example policy. And the one thing that I had him change, if you'll look at the fourth paragraph there, it's, what it says now is the county will encourage contractors to adopt on-the-job seatbelt policies as required in the specifications of the bid and contract documents. That meets the requirements. What he did have in there is that you would meet with them and verify that they have those policies and verify that they use those. I thought that put an additional burden on the commissioners that might be hard for you to follow. So I asked him to do this and as long as we put that in the specifications, and they are in the specifications, we've already been working through the first level of those, then we'll meet those federal, one of those federal requirements. You will find as we work through this process, there are going to be many things like this that you're just required to have in place. In my mind, it's mostly common sense, but we're required to say that we are doing it. So that's why I'm bringing it to you today.
All right. So a seatbelt policy here that basically says how much we valuable, value the lives and safety of our employees. It is the law. If an employee is provided a county-owned vehicle that is used in the course of his or her employment and is also available for that employee's personal use, that employee together with all passengers who occupy the vehicle at any time for any purpose, whether business-related or personal, are required to use the seat belts at all time. So that's a county-owned vehicle. It's not saying we have to wear it in our personal vehicles. It's saying.
It does, it does say that in one place, Judgingly. And I'll bring you that. The requirement applies to business travel, oh, wait just a minute. The requirement applies to business travel in a vehicle owned by an individual or employee, regardless of whether the employee is compensated for the use of his travel. So if they're on business for the county in their own car, if I go to a meeting at City Hall, I'm required to wear my seatbelt.
Okay.
That's, that's one of the federal requirements. Now, I wear my seatbelt, but some people may not. But now we're going on record to say it is a requirement in Titus County. And it's, we're only doing this because of the ARPA funds.
I've got a question on, on our guys when they're patching. I mean, if they're in and out of the truck, they may drive far from here to the door and have to get back out of the truck. Are they going to be required to do that?
I don't see an exception there, Jimmy.
Well, that's kind of what I thought when you was reading that.
It says whether business-related or personal are required to use seatbelts at all times the vehicle is in motion.
Maybe you shouldn't ask too many questions. Is, is there anyone?
I'm going to get the questions from them when I tell them that.
Is there anyone that wishes to resign today? In all seriousness, we know it's, we know it's a safety feature that absolutely works and if this is required in order for us to move forward with receiving our funds, I think it's a no-brainer and I still think we should all encourage one another to wear seatbelts. So if you are willing to adopt this seatbelt policy, I need a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion is made to adopt a Titus County seatbelt policy made by Commissioner Fitch. So maybe in trouble here.
Second.
Second.
Can I get a second, please? Can I get a second?
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All right. Here's the moment of truth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you. Barbara, thanks for dealing with those little details that make this thing happen. Item number 10, approve oral and written reports.
Make a motion, we approve the reports.
Second. Second by Commissioner Parshman. Anyone have a comment or question regarding the report provided to you by Barbara? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's your first signature. We have a budget amendment. This is 20, oh, treasurer, I got those out of order. Cheryl's treasurer's report here for your approval and consideration.
Make a motion. I've got a question on that.
Okay.
On the right-of-way cash and bank, are we, are we paying just like this that we just approved for them out of that, that fund?
Yeah.
Is that what we're paying for that? We still got 1.6 in there?
Okay.
Jimmy, I wouldn't, I believe that we still have a significant amount of money left in there for the utility relocation.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I was just wondering about that and.
And then remember, we still have some monies from our award with net RMA, $300,000 or so. So assuming that Gary and his team can help us get those utilities negotiated and relocated, we should be okay. We should be fine. All right. Back to the treasurer's report.
I second it.
Was there a motion? Okay, Applewhite, Commissioner Applewhite made the motion. Commissioner Fitch seconded. All in favor of approval, say aye. Another one for your signature. We have budget amendment number 2022-020. So this is our 20th of the year. There's two components to this one. The first impacts JP 2, Judge Dunn. We are taking $300 out of her travel and seminar budget, putting it into her dues and bonds so that she can cover the increased cost for dues and bonds. In the sheriff's office, we are taking $2,000 out of the radio expense budget and 900 out of the camera, camera supplies budget and putting that $2,900 into office expense. And the increase is because cost of office. And the increase is because cost of office supplies has increased. So, that is the extent of budget amendment number 20.
Make a motion for the amendments?
Motion for approvals made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 13, sign pay orders, approve payment of current set of bills.
Make a motion, we pay a bid.
That motion's made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. Any comments or discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 14, closing comments, thank you for two good productive days of budget discussion on Thursday and Friday of last week. As a reminder, we'll have another meeting on Wednesday that may be brief, may not be, and then Barbara will begin the process along with her staff of assembling those budget figures for us. That's all that I have. Commissioner Parker, I'll start on your end. Commissioner Applewhite?
Well, just continuing praying for Mike Logan, he had a slight heart attack Thursday, and they put stents in his widowmaker, so he's, he'll be off next couple of weeks trying to recuperate from that. He's doing good, I seen him this morning, he got out of the hospital yesterday about 4:00.
And he lost some movement or speech or anything like that?
No, he's had a spell Monday the same way and he didn't tell nobody. Then he got scared and Thursday, he said he drove himself home and his wife took him to the hospital.
Mike serves in several capacities for the county. Yeah, well, thank you, I'm glad that was no more damaging than, at least it appears to be. Commissioner Fitch?
Just praying for Mike and hope he gets back to good health, we're gonna miss him. I know he's raring to go.
Commissioner Parchment?
No comment?
Alright, if there is nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Parchment, second Commissioner Fitch, all in favor, say aye.